Good evening, everyone. This is Cupertino City Council's special meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is 5 o'clock and Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'm told Councilmember Chow is on her way. Councilmember Frueen?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Wei?
Here, thank you. We are going to the study session. The subject is received presentation regarding revenue tax measure options for the city's general fund and provide direction to staff on which revenue tax measures, if any, to explore for feasibility through opinion research for the November 2024 election. And may I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Our Admin Services Director Christina Alfaro has a report for us.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just a brief introduction before I hand it over to Wing C. Fox and Jim Morris with Urban Futures, Inc., or UFI. We're here this evening with the revenue tax measures item because this is a council work program item. This item also came before the council in 2019. UFI also assisted us with that presentation and analysis as well. The results of that were we did not move forward with any revenue tax measure, and that was mostly driven by that we were in the middle of a pandemic. At that time, council chose not to move forward. But the conversation, aside from it being a council work program item, comes at a really opportune time as the city is facing a $15 million structural deficit. To date, staff has really only brought you one mechanism of balancing the budget, which is expenditure reductions. But as we stated on the roadmap for budget balancing, that we would be coming forward with the revenue tax measures item and it before you this evening. The other thing I just wanted to make sure was clear is that what we're asking for is direction on gathering more information on one of these tax measures. We are not asking for any action to place a tax measure on the ballot. We're asking to just give the direction to gather more information and bring that back to city council. With that, I will turn it over to Jim Morris, who's joining us via Zoom. Wing C. Fox is here next to me in the audience, and they'll tag team the presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Great, thanks, Christina. Hopefully, everybody can hear me and see the screen that I'm sharing. Mayor, council members, good to be with you again. Appreciate your time this evening. This is an updated presentation from, as Christina said, the presentation we did in 2018-19. And we're pleased to be back and discussing with you several tax revenue options for the city's consideration. And we're going to step through those this evening and then hopefully field your questions and hopefully get you to a point where you're ready to take some action on moving this forward. We're going to discuss four different types of tax revenue options with you. First is the transaction and use tax, also known as a TUT. A transit occupancy tax, a POT, or sometimes called a hotel or bed tax. A parcel tax, which we'll explain, and then a business operations tax. Before we discuss the particular, each of those particular options, I want to discuss with you the four criteria, the lenses through which we look at the tax measures and the considerations that we make when we, as you'll see at the end, we kind of rank these in terms of what we think is the best fit. And so wanted to lay those out up in front so that people can understand that. First consideration is the adequacy and certainty of the tax measure. Does it sustainably generate sufficient revenue that the city or the jurisdiction needs on a year-over-year basis? And is there a sense of volatility of that revenue source that you need to be concerned about that might affect your ability to budget that revenue on a consistent basis each year? Second consideration is equity and fairness. Obviously, there's lots of different perspectives about what is equitable or fair. I want to, we want to explain those in terms of the perspective we take from a tax measure standpoint. One is, is the fiscal burden appropriately spread? And that's in several ways. Is it appropriately spread across the taxpayers who are being asked to bear the burden of that tax? Or is there some equitable spread within the group that's required to pay? Second consideration, is it equitable in terms of your surrounding communities? Or does it make you an outlier in that group? Because that affects the third consideration, that outlier status, or even within a group, a disproportionate spread can skew economic incentive and cause people to take different actions based upon that tax, which then could affect the tax base. Third consideration is transparency. This is really just about people's understanding. Can they understand the tax? Because if people don't understand the tax and how it's levied on them, it's difficult for them to support that and be comfortable with paying that. Fourth consideration is the simplicity in terms of the city's considerations, in terms of how much of a burden is there on you to administrate the tax for the revenue you're trying to collect. As you'll hear in our presentation, most of our considerations focus on the first two, the adequacy and the equity. Transparency and simplicity, the measures that we're, or the options that we're presenting to you, fairly similar in terms of their transparency and simplicity. We've tried to make those non-issues in the four options we're bringing forward. With that, unless there's questions about those four criteria, I'd like to hand it over to Wing C., who's going to discuss the first two options with you.
Thank you, Jim. So based on the considerations that Jim just reviewed, we will step through those four options and in the order that we have ranked them. The first is the transaction and use tax, or sometimes known as an add-on tax or a district tax. A little bit different than the state sales and use tax, and that is based on the delivery or use of the goods in the city as opposed to the location of the sales transaction. This is a very well-known type of tax, has a high voter approval rate. In 2022 and 2020, sales tax, local sales tax measures that went to ballot were approved at a 73% to 74% voter approval rate. So this steps through what is available to the city of Cupertino in terms of the capacity for a TUT. The statewide cap is at 9.25%, unless there is special legislation. In Santa Clara County, there was special legislation by the Peninsula Quarter JPA at 1/8%. So the Santa Clara County cap is 9.375%, leaving Cupertino with 0.25% capacity. We estimate that if the city were to place a 0.25% sales tax on the ballot, this would generate approximately $5.4 million annually to the general fund. As you can see to the table to the right, 9.375% sales tax rate keeps it very competitive, proportionate to its neighboring cities, and even more competitive than the San Mateo County to the north, cities that are, many are at 9.875%. So stepping through the pros and the cons of a TUT. As I mentioned, this is a very well-known, widely-known type of tax and has a high voter approval rate. The voter approval requirement is a majority vote or 50% plus one. In 2020, 2022, as I mentioned, 73%, 74% approval rate, even through the pandemic. In terms of competitiveness and adequacy, if the city were to adopt 0.25% TUT, as I mentioned, still keeps it very competitive to the region and generates really the highest revenue anticipated compared to the other three tax measures that we'll be presenting. In terms of who bears the tax burden, this is spread across residents and businesses as well as visitors in terms of a daytime workforce that come in. Pre-pandemic estimated that 60,000 additional population coming in during the daytime and then potentially buying as they're coming in or leaving from work or during their lunch hour. And also, this last reason in terms of the use it or lose it. This is the only tax measure among the four where even if the city were not to adopt it, it could be taken up by another county or regional agency. And if that were the case, the city would not be able to put that on the ballot without special state legislation. There are a couple of cons to the TUT, including volatility tends to be subject to overall economic trends, although not quite as volatile as others like TOT. And also, just to mention that it's not applicable to some of the business-to-business sales in which purchasers are located outside of the city. Next, we'll step through transient occupancy tax, or TOT. This is often referred to as a painless tax because it is paid by non-residents, but it does impact the hotel occupancy and potentially future growth in this area if it's much higher than surrounding cities. This also, like the TUT, has a high voter approval rate. In 2022, 77% approval rate, and in 2020, 91% approval rate. This is also a well-known tax measure, and most cities and counties in California have a TOT. The city's current TOT is at 12%. So again, looking at the competitiveness to the region, to the right, you see Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, as well as San Francisco. The TOT does range, and the city of Cupertino is currently sort of mid-range. However, even if the city were to increase its TOT from 12% to 15%, which would essentially put it the highest in the region and even near the highest in the state with Palo Alto being at 15.5%, that would be higher. So even if you raised it from 12% to 15%, we estimate that the additional revenue generated from that would only be about 1.9 million. Also mentioned that the TOT has been updated with an ordinance to include not just the hotel stays, but Airbnb and VRBO as well. So again, stepping through the pros and the cons of a TOT. This is a majority voter approval as well. It has high voter approval, high receptivity, and also is a tax that is borne by non-residents or visitors coming in. In terms of the competitiveness, as I mentioned, if the city were to go from a 12% to a 15% rate, putting it the highest of the region, it still would not be quite as adequate in terms of the revenue generation compared to a TUT. And this also tends to be the most volatile of the four that we've mentioned and really subject to economic trends. And that would mean that it's a little bit less predictable for the city in terms of whether that revenue can be depended upon for generation. That, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Great, we'll step through two others, a parcel tax and then a business operations tax. The first, the parcel tax, it's a non-add valorem tax. So that's different than the basic property tax that everyone pays. You can levy a parcel tax in two basic methodologies. Either a flat tax per parcel, everyone pays the same amount per parcel, or you can use some rate that's based upon a variable related to the use of the parcel in terms of its size, the type of use, or the square footage of a building. Does provide some flexibility. You can even include an inflationary index in there to help that revenue keep pace with your expenses. Biggest thing, it's important to note that this is different than all of the other, the three other options that we're presenting to you, is a parcel tax has a 2/3 voter requirement. And so that high threshold of voter approval raises some concerns about the ability to be successful should you go to the ballot with that. In terms of the city's current position with parcel taxes, the city does not levy one. The school district, Fremont Union, has a current parcel tax reauthorized recently. It's $98 a parcel, flat rate. Cupertino Union had one, $250 per parcel. It expired. There was an attempted reauthorization of that that failed back in '21, just before it expired, at $398 per parcel, again, a flat rate. You can see to the right on the table, there are some cities around you that have adopted parcel taxes. They're not that common of a tax utilized by cities. And you can see some of them have used a flat rate, fairly low, below $250. But some of them also used a, well, at least one of them has used, two of them, sorry, Water District and then East Palo Alto has used a variable rate on a square footage base. So there is some decent approval when they've got on the ballot, high approval rates, but we just really kind of want you to be cautious with this because the data set is not that robust to really take as something that's maybe reliable. Two important elements considering this is, one, where they have been approved, as you can see on the chart, they're generally for specific purposes, not general fund purposes. And secondly, these are, you know, not commonly utilized. And typically, in the cities where they're high, there have been, these communities are much more heterogeneous in terms of the types of uses and the types of parcels. If you look at El Matador, Portola Valley, and Atherton as those examples. So we wanted to give you an example of what this would raise. Again, you can set a parcel tax at any rate you want. There is that discretion, it just can't be confiscatory. But we wanted to do this as an example of what might be supportable within the community. So we utilized a $250 per parcel tax rate as an example. We did that because Cupertino Union had that one previously. It expired, they tried to raise it, it was not reauthorized. So there might be some community comfort with that level, there may not be. What would that bring in if applied to the parcels within the city of Cupertino? About 3.7 million a year. Below that, we just translated that into a variable rate on a per-square-foot basis. What would that be? Again, that helps to improve the equity in terms of the distribution of the tax burden within the taxpayer range, get out the regressive nature of that flat tax a bit. So if you brought in the same amount of revenue as the $250 per parcel tax, flat rate, on a square-foot basis, that translates into about 2.1 cents per square foot of lot size or parcel size. Talk about the pros and cons of this parcel tax. It would have low volatility compared to other options that we're presenting because that parcel tax is paid year-over-year no matter what. It doesn't have an economic variable within it. There is some flexibility that can take out that regressive nature of a flat parcel tax if you use a variable rate. Get too tricky with it and it compromises that transparency element taxes where people need to understand how they're being assessed. And then again, it does have some high approval within the region when it's placed on the ballot. But as I said, I want you to be cautious with that because it's mostly for special purposes, and there's just not that big of a data set. What our concerns are, of course, the first and foremost is that 2/3 voter threshold, different than the three others. Some equitable concerns, obviously, with the flat rate and, you know, the fact that there's no correlation with people's ability to pay or a metric that might be commensurate with that. Adequacy of this, again, we set it at a $250 flat per parcel rate. That brings in about 3.7 million, that's less than the TUT at 5.4 million. And so if you raise it higher than that, there's some concern about would there be a voter support of that? And then finally, who bears the tax burden compared to a TOT and a TUT, a little bit narrower group, just residents and property owners within the city? And so that's a smaller number or a smaller taxpayer group than the TUT. And then again, it's not, doesn't include any non-residents like the TOT does. Okay. Last option that we wanted to bring forward to you is a business operations tax. This is a general tax on businesses for the privilege of conducting business within your city. The methodology is all over the place if you look at business operations taxes. Some people might think, well, wait a minute, I haven't heard of that before. It's also commonly called a business license tax. So there's flat rate methodologies that have been utilized, there's variable rate methodologies. There's lots of flexibility in how to construct one of these. So there's a little bit of difficulty, as you'll see. We've tried to show you how to compare your city to other cities on a per capita basis, but there's no uniform type of tax that everybody adopts as a business operations. So you've got large discretion, you just can't be discriminatory or confiscatory in terms of how you construct that tax. And then again, you can only tax the activities that are occurring of businesses in your city. You can't reach outside of that. They generally have high receptivity with voters, similar to the TUT and the TOT. And, you know, people like them when they're put on the ballot. There's not a lot of them that have got on the ballot, at least in terms of updating their overall business licenses. When they've gone on the ballot, they've tended to be additional taxes to their existing structure. Talk about the city's business operations taxes. You have a flat $75 tax per business. And then you've got an add-on to that with a square footage variable based upon the size of the business that ranges. You've also got some specific taxes for specific types of businesses. So it's a mix of that flat rate and variable rate. So how do you compare to surrounding jurisdictions? As we said, the best way to look at this, we believe, is just what is the tax burden or the tax revenue per capita that's coming into a city from its business taxes? And in Cupertino, it generates right now about just a little less than $3/4 million. That's about $12 per capita. In the table on the right side, you can see how other surrounding communities compare to that. You're generally very low right now. And at the top of that is Palo Alto, they're the real outlier, and then next to them is Mountain View. I want you to remember that, Mountain View is about $74. Mountain View is about $74. And so when we looked at trying to construct a example of the myriad of business operations taxes that you could adopt, we were asked to take a look particularly at a type of tax called an employee count tax that taxes businesses based upon the number of employees they have within the city. We looked to set, we used a methodology the city had utilized and constructed back in 2018 when it first took a look at this type of tax. And then the rates we applied were to equalize the amount that if you brought in the views rates, you'd bring in an amount that was going to generate about $75 per capita. So it would put you on an equivalent with the city of Mountain View. When we created that structure, applied those rates, it resulted in about $4.1 million being your estimated revenue that could come in. Now, I say estimated here because a big qualifier is this is based upon pre-pandemic employment numbers, which would need to be looked at post-pandemic here and adjusted because likely you're seeing less numbers of employees coming in on a daily basis to the city. Okay, pros and cons of a business operations tax so we can compare it to the others. Standard approval, 50% plus one, the majority approval. Generally, high receptivity by voters, especially in the Bay Region. And low volatility, with one caveat. Low volatility because, again, it's a flat rate or variable rate tax that has to be paid year-over-year. But if there's a metric upon what it's just based and that amount that you're assessing is too high, we talked about how you can start to erode the tax base itself, that you're going to skew economic incentives for those businesses, both existing in the city and those that could potentially come to the city to take actions that may avoid paying that tax. Okay, the cons. Really, the first concern here is the tax burden or equity in two respects. Generally, for just business operation tax, you're only putting the burden on the businesses of the community. Doesn't go on the residents, doesn't include anybody outside the city like a TUT or a TOT. So you have a fairly narrow base over what you're spreading that tax. In particular, how we looked at it in terms, or when we were asked to look at this employee count tax as a business operations tax, there is quite a skew in that, if you recall. I'll just go back, and you can see in this chart, you've got one business that ends up bearing about 80% of the tax burden for this particular structure. There's no caps here, it's just a straight employee count tax. But the nature of the business, of the businesses in the city of Cupertino result in this very skewed structure that would have, you know, you could adjust. But again, if it's based upon employee count, it's hard to make too much adjustment and not get that kind of skewing. Competitiveness and equity, as we said, currently, the city has a very low business tax rate compared to surrounding jurisdictions. That can be a good thing in terms of attracting businesses and keeping them. The particular employee count operations tax that we were asked to look at, if we set you at the top of the region in terms of $75 per capita, not quite Palo Alto, but comparable to Mountain View, the annual amount that you raise is about 4.1 million. Again, even at that rate, it's less than the TUT brings in at 5.4 million. So there's just a concern there about you get too much higher, you're going to start standing out in the region, and it may affect your competitiveness and may still not meet the adequacy of what the city needs in terms of revenue. So those are the four measures. I want to hand it back to Wing C. to summarize them because we were asked to rank them, and she'll go through the next two slides that show you that.
Thanks, Jim. So these next two slides really a summary table of what we just discussed, so we won't go through them in detail. The ranking is based on the order that we presented them, with TUT as number one, TOT next, with parcel tax next, and then lastly, business operations tax. Again, based on the criteria that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting. We also have a slide for potential timeline should the council consider the next steps, consider a ballot measure and exploring the feasibility, and again, there for your information. So our understanding is that the staff right now is looking at various feasibility options. We recommend exploring the feasibility of a transaction and use tax. Again, this is not to recommend placing anything on the ballot because we really don't know. We won't know until we get out and have the opinion research, conduct their survey. We do recommend exploring one because if you put two or more into a survey, you could, the information that comes back may not be great and very robust because there can be survey fatigue, you have a lot of questions depending on how you order them. Again, the data is not as reliable. So we do recommend exploring the feasibility and surveying one, that being the transaction and use tax. And with that, we can answer any questions.
Thank you so much for the detailed report. I'm going to bring back to the council for questions before we open up for public comments. Do we have council members want to ask questions right now? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Chow.
So the, for the TUT tax, what's the basis of the annual sales tax used to get the 5.4 million?
So the transaction use tax is the 5.4 million. The transient, and I'm sorry, councilor, was that the one you were speaking about?
Yeah, so what sales tax, what numbers you are using to derive that number? And when that numbers are, is that pre-pandemic or after?
Yeah, good question. Based upon a quarter percent.
I can take that, Jim, that's okay. Working with our sales tax consultant, HGL, it's based on our most recent sales tax received. So it's post-pandemic, most recent numbers the city has.
Does that take into account the impact of the CDTFT audit?
So as mentioned in the presentation, this tax excludes business-to-business, so it would have no impact based on the CDTFA audit.
Oh, so this will have no, okay, thank you. What's the number used to compute it, 5.4 million?
So it's based on all the other taxable revenues in the city and as mentioned in the presentation, this has looked a little bit differently than the sales tax because it's based on where the goods are shipped to. So what will end up happening is we'll end up realizing revenues that the city currently doesn't realize in sales tax because we don't have the TUT currently. Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Do we have other questions? I do have one question is, I see the timeline of we have to, if we, if we make a decision that we're going to do opinion surveys and, what would be the last? Forty-four, what would be the last... Is that your question? Maybe it's not for you. What would be the last sort of a safe date to decide on one thing to move forward that still can reasonably accommodate opinion surveys, poll surveys, and, you know, all that before the November ballot?
I can take that. So the deadline for the city to submit the ballot measure to the registrar of voters is August ninth. And so working back through that, in terms of when the council would need to make a decision, would be June. And really, the survey, what we would recommend is starting that in January or February, which would give the council a little bit of time to consider the results as well.
Well, if I, you know, listen correctly, maybe February would be the ultimate time so that we can comfortably move something forward with good surveys and good discussions and make the final decisions.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I had a follow-up question to Mayor Way's question. If you could put the timelines...
Jim, can you pull the timelines?
Am I not sharing? I think I shared.
You're currently not sharing, Jim.
Oh, I apologize. I had gone back, but I apologize.
There it is. So the community opinion research. But first of all, is that a survey? Is that more than that? Are there other kinds of opinion research?
Yeah, so when we say community opinion research, it's a little bit different than a typical community survey. This is done by a firm that does typically these surveys. And it's very... It's scientific in the sense that they will survey the demographics based on the voter demographics of the city. So in terms of the political affiliation percentages, that's how many they'll call in their survey sample, age group. And so that the data that you get back is something that is more reliable in terms of, okay, is there good voter approval for this ballot measure?
Okay, so they would go out to the community, residents of Cupertino?
Yes, so based on... They'll take a sample, and the sample will be based on the demographics of the voters of the city. And phone calls, yes, survey questions.
Okay, and on your timelines, you've said in March and April, staff develops options, et cetera, based on community opinion, based on the survey. And what is the process before we get to the June? Do we have to... Does the council need to hear it once, twice?
Yeah, through the mayor, the council will have a number of opportunities to see the data and understand the data and then provide direction on whether the council would want to move forward with a revenue measure or not. There'd be an opportunity to review the information and ask for more information if it was necessary. So there's opportunities in that March and April timeframe for us to really dig into the information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Moore, is your line? I don't know who's later on, sorry. Councilmember Frun.
So were there any other types of revenue measures that you initially considered but that aren't examined here?
We had... In 2018, 19, we had presented a UUT as an option. And that was pulled out of this particular presentation, but that's the only one that we looked at. Those was, again, try to keep things within sort of the existing construct of the city's revenue structure and not necessarily introduce a new novel tax. So there are some out there, but these are the ones that certainly have some voter understanding and familiarity.
Got it. What, under the business ops tax, would be considered a discriminatory tax?
Yeah, well, that's a great question of law. It, you know, something that would impermissibly, you know, overly prejudice a particular group, whether that needs to be... You know, we're not talking about protected classes of people. This is viewed under a much lower threshold legally. But essentially, they want to see uniformity across the parcels in terms of how it's applied. And so when you start to get less uniformity in terms of how you're applying that parcel to parcel, that's when the courts get concerned. But the law's been a little bit in flux in trying to understand both what is a permissible parcel tax if you get too creative with it and what it's not. And so we've tried to present something that's, you know, within what we consider the legal safe harbor right now, which is either a flat tax per parcel or a variable rate, but it's the same variable rate for all parcels.
Got it. So I was at a number of local business events this weekend and asked around amongst folks as to whether they were aware of council actually considering this action. And was a little surprised, even at chamber events, to discover that no one seemed to be in the know. So I'm curious, mostly as a question directed at staff, as to what sort of outreach has been done so far to our business community.
We haven't done any outreach, so we're doing this evening just presenting the options to council once we receive direction. If there's one you wanted to move toward, then we could do the opinion survey, make sure that data kicks back positively to council, and then we would attempt to do outreach at that point.
Got it. And then with respect to the TUT, I'm very curious as to, given the fact that, you know, some other agency, the county or otherwise, could put forward a regional tax measure that could consume the amount that we might still be eligible for. If there were two competing tax measures on the ballot and both won, how do we resolve the conflict? Is it just total number of votes in the jurisdiction?
I could attempt to answer that question as best as I can, which is to say that it's not entirely clear.
Okay.
There is an example in LA County where a county-wide measure passed, and it would only go into effect in the cities that weren't at the cap. And then if... But if those local tax measures have a sunset date, then it would automatically kick in after.
Got it. So we're at the classic law school answer of it depends.
Well, you know, it's a bit of a novel question. I think that was the city attorney who was weighing in. But because I don't know that we have a case where that's been considered, where you have two simultaneous jurisdictions trying to adopt the tax within the permissible cap. But you'd have a conflict of laws, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frun, and then Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Chow.
Okay, thank you. I want to clarify something. There was a question from Councilmember Chow asking essentially what was the revenue basis for the five-point-four million? And I'd like to have this checked. So when I do the math, I take the five-point-four million divided by a quarter percent, and I get two-point-one-six billion. Am I doing that math correctly?
That's... There's a ten... Yes.
Okay.
Bottom line is yes. That's the estimated amount of the transactions that would be taxable under the TUT.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I'm sorry, I did not ask this question earlier, but it was my understanding that we have a thirty-million-dollar decline in revenue going forward for each year. And if there's a simple explanation for how our... I believe you said our structural deficit is at fifteen million. What's going on there that it's not like thirty million each year?
So the city has historically ended the year with a positive fund balance, which means our expenditures weren't right up against to our revenue. So we've generally come in under. So when the thirty-million-dollar dropped, it wasn't a full thirty million. It was... And we also... So that's one. The second thing is we did also make reductions in this year's prior-year budget and the current-year budget as well that helped reduce that gap.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, we're still behind then, ten million. If you were to get some... One of these to get to five million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have plans for that?
Yes, so in January, we'll be coming with service-level reductions to council. But the study is also scheduled to be before council in January as well. So those are just some different options. When we were before you for first quarter, we did also talk about that we did have some additional fund balance to the possibility of being able to use that to have a longer runway in which to balance the budget to bring different options in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow, you have three minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay, so just want to clarify the use it and lose it. So in case the county has a certain major that... But the county already is at the max. So can they still pass a measure that... That they want to purchase, let's say, Lehigh? And then, because we are not the cap, so all our remaining two-point... Point-two-five percent would have to then go to the county. But for another city like Palo Alto, if they are already capped, they won't have... They will not be contributing that to the county. So we are... So it's equitable then?
So I'll help with the answer to this question. So the county has authority already through the state to exceed the cap. So they can move forward with that. If they should choose to put something on the ballot that is successful and it goes above and beyond the cap, that would likely take away our ability to add a sales tax measure on top of that.
So if they go beyond the cap, they... Why are they taking away our ability to... To... For the two-point-two-five percent?
That's the way that it's structured. And unfortunately, it's the first one to get the percentage is the one that gets to control it. So from a local control perspective, that's one of the reasons why we say it's a use-it-or-lose-it situation.
But then that means then Cupertino will be contributing more to the county than other cities who didn't.
I can't argue with that.
That doesn't make sense, but... So if we don't apply it, we might lose it one day?
Councilmember Chow can take a stab at that as well. So if the county were to increase the cap, that does increase the total cap, which would still allow that point-two-five percent. But what we're seeing is another regional agency. You see that there was... There's other agencies that are regional or county that could come in and take that point-two-five percent.
So that major will have to be approved by the voter. Let's say if they put that on the ballot, the county or another agency, and we can wait then at the time, put in a ballot for... To raise our cap to capture the two-point-five. Is that... That's when we would have competing majors? If both pass, do we then get to keep our point-two-five percent?
Right, that's the novel situation that both, you know, our consultant and I were alluding to, that it's not a hundred percent clear what would happen in that situation.
So we could at the time put on the ballot, but we are not sure if we could even get it then?
That's right there. I mean...
Safer to do it earlier.
That's right. It wouldn't... There's not a lot of guidance as to what would happen.
I... Okay.
That is unless the county is raising the cap, then that point-two-five percent is still available. So similar to the Peninsula Quarter JPA, they actually increased the cap, point-one-two-five percent, which is why the Santa Clara county-wide cap is nine-point-three-seven-five percent instead of nine-point-two-five percent.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And if the council have no questions, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Do we have cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak from Community Hall, and I see four hands raised on Zoom.
All right, please proceed. Thank you.
So we have Claudio Bono, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, City Council Chow, Moore, Frun, City Manager, City Attorney, Madam Clerk, and staff. I'm trying to do as fast as I can. My name is Claudio Bono, Cupertino resident. I'm one of those lucky ones that live and work in Cupertino. Tonight, I will represent the Cupertino Hotel, a hotel that has been part of the Cupertino scene since 1987, also formerly known as the Cupertino Inn. COVID hit in March 2020. We're soon going to be March 2024. It's going to be four years that we are dealing with corporate declines. Groups in general are fleeing Cupertino with their tax bracket of fourteen percent. Travel companies need to save money. That's why they are staying in our city. Or let me be blunt and honest. If they come here, it is because I managed to move them here. Free parking, free Wi-Fi, free buffet breakfast and all. It's no wonder we're number one. And my comment to all of you would be, you're welcome. So I've been living in planes this past year. I'm not going to tell you all the places worldwide what I've been, but decision-makers are clear. They are sticking to cities that do not exceed with their tax bracket. It's a no-brainer. Fifteen percent for us would just kill us. And I would say, one-point-nine-million gain? Remember one thing, fifteen percent of zero equals zero. I might as well close the hotel. So parking in San Francisco is seventy-five dollars, Wi-Fi, thirty dollars, breakfast, thirty dollars. So we're in the hotel industry, and we provide this amenities for free, which is a hundred-and-thirty-five-dollar value for them. So again, it's a no-brainer. We have an Apple Visitor Center, we have a Google Visitor Center, we have the best wanderies and BlackBerry Golf Course and shopping all around here in Cupertino and surrounding area. So it's another incentive for them to come and stay with us. And ninety-nine percent of all those companies worldwide land in San Francisco. They visit it, they stay with us, and all of them are going towards LA. So I would also recommend to get more notice to all my counterparts, Juniper, Hyatt House, Aloft and all. While I am a Cupertino resident, I don't think that the residents understand what the increase from twelve to fifteen percent would entail. So I definitely encourage a study session with all the hotels involved. It's not like we have a lot of hotels in the city to begin with compared to others. But the consensus will be no. San Francisco, fourteen percent, LA, fifteen-point-five, Miami, thirteen. Why I say that is because part of their tax bracket, it goes to the district assessment that represent their cities. We don't have that. That means that I have to travel all around the world to be the ambassador for Cupertino in order for them to even know our city. So you want some millions? I'll give you... I'll tell you what to do. Create a visitor center. That will allow us to get millions of dollars.
You're muted. Your time is up. Thank you. So we have Rota Frye, followed by Yvonne Thorsten.
It takes hoteliers and tourism to know what needs to be done, according to Mr. Bono here. And I'm glad he spoke because earlier I talked with the hotels sometime last year about, hey, what about increasing the TOT? They seem to be okay with it, but at the time, we were looking at fourteen percent. So you have a handout. This is also in the minutes online, whatever they call written communications. So anybody online can see this. I'm left with more questions. So when I... You know, we've been considering these taxes for a really long time. They're actually in the budget. So it's not a surprise. They've been there. They haven't been as seriously considered as they are now. But when we were looking at the quarter cent, we were looking around... It raising around three mil in 2021. So what happened? And how do we know we won't be back there? Because what we're looking at, look down here, this is our actual net sales tax income. We're looking at dropping down to about nine million dollars. So, you know, we add another three mil to that, even five mil. It's not going to get us near... Anywhere near close to where we were even in 2015, 16 FY, which is eighteen-point-six. Going to the TOT. Fifteen percent was never considered in the budget. Fourteen was. Kind of wondering about that. And I'm glad to hear what the new idea is about that. We don't want to... We want to get people to come here, visit and eat in our restaurants and stay in our hotels. Going to business license tax. This is an interesting one because in 1920, we had it on the work plan to look at new business license. And then when it came on the budget, we're going to be raising a ten-million dollars for the business license. Now we're talking tonight about four. So I'd like to understand the delta there regarding parcel tax. Not really too crazy about the regressive nature of the parcel tax. So that's one. Anyway, I wanted to put much of this data together through the budget, but I think it's kind of an opportunity for one-stop shop here. This is what was going on with TOT. So you can see, ah, the poor hotels really suffered here. Two-point-one mil, right in the middle of COVID. Had a pretty good year in 1920, nine-point-seven mil. Also, I noted when we built new hotels, we got more tax. Then this is about what our sales tax revenues have been. Want to talk a little bit about property tax. Now, Cupertino gets a very small portion of the property tax that we get from the county, and we need to increase that. And let's see if I covered everything. I also want to thank Thomas over here for explaining to me how this new sales tax works because it's actually kind of a use tax and it's a little different than straight sales. And I thank him for his time. And let's see if I got everything. Oh, yes. Since I don't think this is going to raise all the money that we need, are we going to continue having these elections to say, hey, we need more money, we need more money, we need more taxes? We're going to get this sales tax thing in, and then we're going to... We're gonna get this sales tax thing in, and then we're gonna get the hotel tax, and then what? So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Glenn Fishler, followed by Mohan. Welcome, Yvonne.
Hello. I'm Yvonne Thorstensen. I don't make it here very often, but I, I want to every time thank everyone who's sitting on the dais there that does all the hard work. And also for the presentations today about taxes, which was really informative and interesting, surprisingly. And um, so I'm a, a long-term resident, a homeowner, and proud parent of two kids that graduated from Cupertino schools. So I really am, am glad to see that um, the city can, can um, tackle any of, all of the, the big problems that come up. So on the, the um, presentations tonight, I think that there was a convincing case for, for putting that TUT tax on the ballot. So I would be in favor of that. But you could also get creative, and this is just a story from my dad, who was also a legislator back in the seventies probably. And uh, he was in um, he was a state representative. And at one point, they were looking to, to increase revenue. And he had this idea, I'm sorry they didn't implement it, but he said, um, let's just, let's just tax the um, any burning of marijuana in the, in the wheat fields in the winter and charge more for standing downwind. So I'll just throw that out in case you need new ideas. But thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Glenn Fishler, followed by Mohan.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a Cupertino resident. And I'm speaking with regard to the tax measures. I'm only too aware of the thirty million dollars that Cupertino will be losing as a result of the state tax audit. The city's already taken measures to reduce expenditures to compensate for this loss of revenue. The structural deficit, however, also requires finding ways to increase revenue. While grants and development fees can be part of revenue generation, tax measures are the most reliable means of generating ongoing revenue for the city. Staff is recommending the sales tax option, TUT, increasing the sales tax by a quarter of a percent, which would generate five point four million for the city. Frankly, I don't might make my buying decisions based on the amount of the sales tax. I go where the businesses are. Of the op, other options, the transient occupancy tax or hotel tax taxes visitors to our city, but it only generates one point nine million. Too little for the amount required to pass such a measure. A parcel tax? Well, this requires a super majority and a specific benefit. I walked for this CUSD parcel tax, and we still couldn't get a super majority. I don't suggest trying to do something that I think can't be done. Too much money. A business operations tax, also known as a headcount tax, would be borne by a few major employers. We've been through this before. At a time when Cupertino desperately needs new businesses, this would encourage existing businesses to move out of Cupertino and discourage new businesses from coming in. Tax measures require time and money. There's a specific process that needs to be followed to be successful. I've worked on tax measures over the years, most of them successful. I urge council to unanimously move forward on the recommended sales tax measure. It will take a commitment from all of you, all of you, to make it successful. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Glenn Fishler, followed by Mohan, followed by Yan Song. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, City Council members and staff. Uh, first, uh, I wanted just uh, exhort you to continue to look for additional revenue streams, given your situation. I'm glad that you are. Cuts obviously are coming, but revenue streams can help cuts. I like living in Cupertino and enjoy the services that I get. I don't wanna see the services go away. So I know that cuts mean reduction in services. And the best thing we can do to offset those reduction in services is find new revenue streams. So glad that you're doing that. Regarding what's before you today, with that, I think what makes the most sense is the recommendation put forth by your consultants and your staff. Uh, put the TUT, transaction use tax on, on the ballot, obviously. Before that, take the recommendation and study it further. Makes a lot of sense to me. The other ones don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Next, we have Mohan, followed by Yan Song. Welcome, Mohan.
This is my first time here. I'm not related to Sheila. Additional revenue streams. I think that's what I wanted to talk about. I think one of the areas, because um, it's overlooked, I think, is a lot of cities are doing this. They're looking at houses being vacant. They are not generating any income, or they are non-owner occupied and generating some kind of thing. So we have incentive because when I was talking to Han, she said, we need to bring more people into the, we need to make it affordable and bring more residents into the community, which means that as more and more homes are being rented out, that, that's a potential right, uh, rental revenue piece that we need to look at from our tax perspective. And we keep adding on to the tax burden of parcel taxes and everything else. But a lot of owners are enjoying the benefits of owning a property in Cupertino. And they're not living in Cupertino, which means that, hey, there is much non-residents and they do get an income stream out of Cupertino that we don't benefit out of. So let's take a look at that. And from a survey perspective, let's do that. And I bet you, there's at least a couple of million in there uh, from a revenue perspective and from a tax perspective. That's my feedback and that's, I didn't come prepared, but I will do that um, data analysis and get back on the, we'll email one of you council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mohan. And our final speaker in Community Hall before we move to Zoom is Yan Song. Welcome, Yan.
Thank you, everyone. I'm uh, glad to be here. Um, I actually talked to a homeless on the street. He was a resident of Cupertino and because the rent was so high, he couldn't afford. So they moved on the street. So, and he actually told me that anybody who's not in tech, who's not an engineer, may become homeless one day because the rent is so high. There's no affordable housing. And then the spending are so expensive. So when we consider a tax bill, please just keep in mind, we are not only having the richest company in the world that are in the city of Cupertino operating. We also have poor people, low-income people. They may make few uh, twenty thousand a year. So this sales tax is the same for poorer people as the rate for the millionaire billionaires. So that's one thing I wanted you to consider, that uh, we do have low-income families living in the city of Cupertino. And then another thing is that um, as we are running as a city, we are subsidizing, we are helping the richest company in the world. And uh, maybe that's why we have the lowest rate of the property tax or the business license. I don't know. So can we think about some other revenue? Um, and um, I think finally, I'm not sure if you noticed that many flippers are operating in Cupertino. So they will buy the properties and flip them in a year. Within this year, they can make two million dollar profits. And have we considered anything to stop the flipping so that people can afford the, living in the city of Cupertino? So thank you very much for your consideration for all these facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Yan. And we will now move to Zoom. We have seven hands that were raised before the cutoff. Babu Srinavasan, San Ar, and Jennifer Sharon will speak first. Welcome, Babu.
Thanks for the opportunity. Just listening to the tax as a revenue. Two things, I, I always feel like cities for the people, okay? The business brings in revenue for the city. So I'm not instinct increasing anything. And that too, the ones that has gone to public and failed miserably to give it a try again. And when it is hotel, I did listen to people, yes, the business is down. But increasing the tax on the transient occupancy tax comes out of the people who are staying. And one percent, two percent increase out there doesn't affect the people who are travelers. So the city's aim should be on those who are non-residents to pay a little bit of one percent or two percent tax as TOT. The city should stay away from TOT. Cities should never even think about taxing people who are residents. Cities should consider how you can reduce their burden. That should be the way. And interestingly, I noticed the business operation tax, the last line on the table where it is five thousand plus members, is it only one company? But the previous line and that line doesn't have any difference in tax. Why is that? I'm mistaken? You want to flash it? Is it, are we taking favor for the big companies who are turning out and sharing out billions in profit? I don't think that is fair. You should start taxing, or you should have a deal with them to make sure, even if they sell it outside state, they should pay for that, a better deal for the city. Because the moment you increase the sales tax, people are crazy. I have seen people running around and buying in other state and bringing it. You know how much uh, Apple iPhones are sold every year, especially on Thanksgiving? This is not fair. Cities should wake up. City council should wake up. They should not sleep. You should think, you should be a part and parcel of the city. People resident, you should have the nerve in it. What is running around? Why we are losing the revenue? Did we get a survey? Why we are having a decreased revenue? We should have the city put in for a consultant to study that rather than taking surveys. If it is a ballot measure, you should reach out to all the doors. You should send out a postal mail, and then they can drop it in a return. You don't need to pay for consultant to take a revenue survey. We just put it, post it. People are educated. They are not, especially the ones who are living in city of Cupertino. They are all knowledgeable. They are not, uh, what do you call, they, they never went to school or something. If you reach out, definitely it will save money, not only.
Thank you, Babu. That is your time. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Sean Hughes. Welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor V. Uh, Mayor V, this might be the last time I get to address you as Mayor V, unless you take a second term, which I believe you are not. So I wanna firstly congratulate you on a year of completion. That year went by too quickly. Uh, I couldn't agree more with the previous speaker. Uh, I, I wanna firstly say, uh, CUSD lost the Measure A in twenty twenty-one. The re, and, and I will say, I campaigned actively against Measure A. So I can, I can say that as a parent in CUSD, the reason that it met so much resistance in twenty twenty-one was because CUSD lost all credibility with the community by locking down schools in twenty twenty and losing a year of education for kids. CUSD cut down distance learning, and there were a number of services for young children that was lost. It was a year of lost learning. And the parent community actively campaigned because they recognized that the trust was lost. And it is the same situation today with the city. The city continues to cut resident services. There have been zero cuts in staff. There have been zero cuts in unfilled recs. And there are not even options that are put on surveys to talk about the choices offered to residents to vote on, on these surveys. The surveys are highly imbalanced, and they only talk about cuts in resident services with no talk of cuts in staff. As we know, the biggest cost to the city is staff. So I'd like to echo what the previous speaker said. I wanna fully voice my support for TOT, transient occupancy tax against hotels, as well as the business ops tax. And I wanna fully uh, voice my opposition to TUT as well as a parcel tax. Uh, residents are suffering right now. The tech industry is going through massive rounds of layoffs. Just this week, two thousand layoffs were announced at VMware, and twenty-five percent of Nextdoor was laid off just this week. Every time you see a tech layoff, chances are somebody in Cupertino got laid off because Cupertino is home to the tech community. And you need to realize that when a tech job is lost, it is incredibly impossible to find another job right now. I personally know at least ten people who have never been laid off in their career, who were laid off this year, all in the Bay Area. And I know several people that have been looking for jobs for over nine months and have been unable to find a job. Inflation is high, mortgages are high, first-time homeowners can't afford a mortgage, first-time homeowners can't afford property tax. Please do not raise taxes on residents. Please focus your taxes on businesses, and that means TOT and the business ops tax. And I also don't understand why this consultant is so out of touch with the community.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Jennifer Sharon is next, followed by Sean Hughes, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Way. I'm sad I don't get to say Mayor Way much more after tonight. Um, I'm speaking only as a resident this evening. I'd like to start out by saying thank you so much for an excellent and thorough presentation. I'm not for taxation. I think everybody who knows me knows that. And I'm a little surprised that I felt that I should speak tonight on this issue. However, there seems to be some good reasons that we should consider this transaction and use tax. The first is that likely we'll be paying it anyway. As the council, the county will ask for it, and we won't even reap the benefits all of, of all of it if that happens. The second is that we are in such a budget crisis, I can't imagine, it's not a good idea to not consider all avenues. I know that staff are considering many deep cuts, including potential staff cut, which will be announced next month. Lastly, the increase is point two five percent, which is very small. Um, I already pay that extra amount of tax when I shop in Campbell. And to be honest, I've never thought about not going there to eat in the prune yard or to buy a new pair of shoes from Roadrunner Sports because of the taxes. Um, because of that little difference. Uh, one note, I would ask if it is possible to have this tax be temporary? For example, sundown after five years, when hopefully we are on better financial footing. Um, that might actually make people feel more comfortable about it. For these reasons, and with this possible request for sundowning, I encourage you to support the staff recommendation of considering the transaction and use tax. Thank you for considering my input tonight.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Sean Hughes, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Sean.
Hi, thanks for the chance to comment. Uh, I would like to express support for the staff recommended direction to study the transaction and use tax or TUT because of its low political risk, significant revenue generation, regional alignment uh, by bringing our TUT in line with surrounding areas, and the risk mitigation of being left out of the economic wide measure of Cupertino were to fail to adopt this one now. Um, I don't really understand other commentary around city staff. It seems like a distraction, and if mentors are really concerned about better city services, reducing the city staff scenes and capacity to, to deliver said services seems like an odd way to achieve such a goal. Um, as highlighted in the analysis by the consultants and staff, I think um, the anemic perform, projected performance of a TOT, political risk and logistical difficulty of another parcel tax, and the negative implications around equity and competitiveness of a business operation tax should be ample reasons enough to forego these options from even consideration. Um, I know I'm supposed to only limit my comments to the current item, but I cannot stay on later. And would like to also express support for maintaining our technology contract in order to be adopted by my action principles. Um, thank you again for the chance to comment.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Louise Sedadi, followed by a final speaker, Debbie Timmers. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, uh, City Council and staff.
Thank you to the consultants for their presentation and information. I want to express my opposition to a parcel tax and also anything that has an auto-increasing inflation. I vote no on any of those because those can grow very quickly. They compound each year and get bigger and bigger. And if you're worried about people becoming homeless, all these different increments can just be the last straw one day. So, that's one thing I want to tell you. I would, I support, the city does not have, does not make sure that all their businesses have a business license. That would be a way to get some income. All these are incremental. If you just implement and enforce your business license tax, you would get more. Also, Mohan suggested vacancy tax, rental tax and flipping. Those things would help housing availability and also get you some more money. Let's see. Jennifer suggested a sundown. That would appeal to me. Someone who doesn't like automatic increases year after year on taxes would, you could sway me with a sundown. Because you're supposed to, you are trying to get out of this mess. And by saying you have a sundown, you anticipate getting out of the mess by then. So, I would support something like that. The TOT, 15%, I think is way too much. You have to be competitive if you want people to stay in Cupertino. Maybe one more percent. Get it from, you know, don't get your money from one soul. Distribute it so that not everybody is impacted. And the TUT, my question is, if I order food and it's delivered to Cupertino, do I pay this tax? Can you explain exactly when this tax would hit? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final two speakers are Louise Sedadi and Debbie Timmers. Welcome, Louise.
Hello. This is Louise Sedadi. I wish to thank the staff and the council on taking a problem-solved positive, problem-solving approach to increasing the revenue for our city during this time of protracted revenue decrease and consequently, protracted budget shortfall. Of the five options presented by the staff tonight, and I do commend them for the thoroughness, the depth of research and detail. Of the five options presented by the staff tonight, the first option is the TUT option, a quarter of 1% sales tax. It gives us the highest return and with the least negative consequences or obstacles to overcome. It just makes sense for the city staff to study the community input regarding this most optimal option, the TUT, and then putting the TUT on the November ballot, of course, depending on the community input. And regarding a comment, one of the speakers said that why isn't the city considering cutting staff? The very sad fact is, the city is now considering all means of cutting its costs. And they will be presenting next month options to decrease the cost of the city, including decreasing the city services and including the staff cuts. So, the next presentations on the cuts will be very painful to hear. So, I think we must act in a positive manner with, and move forward in the option that is the least painful and the most productive in what it will give to our city. It gives us the highest return with the least negative consequence or obstacles. And I want to commend the city staff and the council if they can come together and work positively in a positive direction to increase our revenues before we have a very painful next update by the staff on what they're going to do to cut costs. Thank you for all your hard work in coming together in a positive focus toward future solutions. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Louise. Our final speaker is Debbie Timmers. Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. My name is Debbie Timmers and I'm a 10-year resident. Thank you to the staff and to Urban Futures for your excellent analysis and presentation. And I would like to express my support for the staff recommendation looking at the use of transition and use tax to help us mitigate our budget shortfall. And just to note, to solve this issue, we have to have a two-pronged approach. We need to reduce expenditures, but we also need to increase revenues. And we can only accomplish this if we work together. I just have a couple other things I also want to mention. Someone talked about Measure A and housing. Measure A got 59% of the vote. It didn't pass because the threshold is two-thirds because of Prop 13. We only need 51% to pass a sales tax. Housing and rental costs have no relationship to a sales tax. In fact, if we cannot raise the most money via a sales pack as soon as possible, we won't be able to address the housing crisis because we will have to lay off staff and we won't be able to meet our housing element. Empty home taxes and small revenue generators will not at all be sufficient. A sunset date for a sales tax is fine, but it's literally like 0.25%. It's already lower than San Jose, which has far more low-income residents than Cupertino. So, thank you. I hope you will pass this.
Thank you, Debbie. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the comments and all the public comments. It's really wonderful to have a very passionate and knowledgeable, you know, comments for the city council. I'm going to bring that this back to the city council for discussion or unless somebody wants to make a motion and second for discussion, or we can open up for discussion. Doesn't seem that anybody want to make a motion, so I'll open up for discussion. Who wants to start? Councilmember Chow?
I actually have more question. So, the transaction use tax, I understand are, will be charged for those goods delivered, but no sales tax has been charged. So, it applies to those sales where those, so for example, if food delivery, I think we need some concrete examples. So, like food delivery, I assume that sales tax is already charged. So, it won't apply. Then, could you give some examples of what, when this TUT would apply? Or who would be impacted?
Yeah. If I can take that, Councilmember Chow. The same types of goods that are exempt from the state sales tax would be exempt from the TUT. So, I think somebody asked about groceries. The extent that you're not paying sales tax on whatever is in your basket of groceries that's not taxable as a state sales tax, this would not apply to that. So, it functions similarly in terms of exempt items as the state sales tax. In terms of what types of transactions are taxed, those are goods and services that are purchased within the city limits that are consumed there or goods that are delivered into the city where the recipient is a resident or a business in the city.
So, if I eat in a restaurant, would this increase my, the tax I pay in the restaurant?
Yes, to that portion of it that is subject to the sales tax.
But that's, but I'm already paying sales tax, so does, would this TUT tax add 0.25% to my bill?
Correct.
So, it will or it will not?
Yeah, correct. It will.
It will. So, it will apply to all the restaurant. And for example, I understand if I order a computer from out of state and then that order delivered to Cupertino, I think it's not charged with sales tax, so this TUT would apply.
Yes, potentially. There, the, once you start to deal with out-of-state goods that are delivered into the state, the state has some regulations that apply to that that may subject that to what's called a state use tax. And so, this would not apply. But generally, it's, I think, the good admonition or rule to apply is, yes, if a durable good is being delivered into the city, the seller is responsible for applying that TUT, additional quarter percent to that.
So, this will mostly be applied to residents of Cupertino?
And people that come in and do shopping.
And people who shop here. And if I divide 4.5 million by 20,000 households in Cupertino, that's about 225 per household, per year, in average, will be charged.
Well, I can't tell you all of the people who actually engage their shopping in the city, but it does include your daytime working population to some extent. So, that's a significant number when you look at it in comparison to other jurisdictions.
That's fine. So, this would only apply to 37% of all the tax we have right now. It doesn't apply to the 67% of the B2B tax. So, I'm curious, what kind of tax major might help us retrieve more tax from the B2B tax? Is what type of sales tax majors are there?
Right. It treats it just like every other jurisdiction. You don't have authority to tax transactions where those goods are delivered outside of your jurisdiction. So, that happens to be significant, given the nature in Cupertino, given the nature of several of your businesses who do a lot of business-to-business transactions with the recipient outside of the city. So, we just point that out, but that is the same across every jurisdiction. There isn't a tax where you could say, hey, we want to tax transactions where the recipient of the goods resides outside of or is located outside of the city.
Thank you so much.
Anybody slide this on? Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
I'm looking at the timelines slide. I seem to be fixated on that. I'm just throwing this out there. Since staff is coming back in January with a complete discussion of expenditure reductions. That's right, right? Okay. Would it make sense to discuss any revenue measures alongside the expenditure reductions that we are considering for the next fiscal year? Because in my mind, it'll, it'll give me, give us a couple of options. It'll give us a month to, January 17th, I believe, is the next meeting. It'll give us four or five weeks to do some preliminary outreach. And I'm not talking about the kind of consumer research survey that the consultant spoke about, but just a general feel from businesses, from the Chamber of Commerce, from residents about how, or what, or just informational, what do they feel about a tax increase? Or how do they feel about a tax increase? And I think that in January, we would have a more complete picture. We would have these revenue increases, which we have to go with. There's no discussion about should we, shouldn't we? We should, because there is no other option. But it would put it in the context of the entire budget picture for next year and the future. It would also give them, tell the public and tell us as well that we shouldn't really be operating in a vacuum with expenditures considered at one meeting and revenues considered at another meeting.
If I can start on this one and through the mayor. So, there'll be a lot of decisions to wrestle with in, through the budget process. The idea about front-loading this is to give you more information so that when you get there, you have that information to be able to compare your opportunities, what you have before you to make as a selection. And that's why the polling is the recommended direction here. The polling will simply put you at a place where you can understand whether a tax measure is viable or not and whether it factors into the entire decision process. So, we may find that, you know, that the polling is at 20% success rate and so decide that a revenue measure is not something that we would want to pursue based on that, which means that you would need other alternatives in order to balance the budget. So, it's meant to provide you with that additional information so that when you have all of, all of the discussion, you have as much information as possible at once.
Do you have a follow-up? Okay. Yes, please. No, you do. You have time.
The consumer research survey that the consultant spoke about would be a follow-up to the direction we give them today. Proceed with this tax or the TUT or the TOT or the parcel tax. So, that's what they would be focusing on. My thought was, should we be looking at a broader picture than taxes in general? How does the community feel about a tax increase in general? And not really specifically on one of these four options.
Ms. Fox, is that something that you can, you can address in terms of your experience with tax measures?
Yes. And again, the reason why we recommend place that you, surveying one particular is again, the data that you get back in terms of how making the decisions. As Assistant City Manager mentioned, if it doesn't poll well, I don't think anyone would recommend moving forward with a ballot measure. And that is just additional information that you would have. If you survey, if people in general are in support of taxes, each tax is so different, I think it would be difficult to understand if they said yes or no, whether one particular tax would actually poll well or not.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore and following Councilmember Frum.
Thank you. So, I'm not sure if this is something the vice mayor is interested in, but I'm concerned about the number of people that we've heard speak. And we can see, unfortunately, the lobby is packed right now and we're contemplating something very serious. And we don't seem to have the outreach. And we need everybody out there in here providing us with their input. So, my question would be whether you would entertain the idea that we would consider this in the early part of January after there's been some more outreach to the community so that we have everyone out there in the room and providing us with their input? Because I know I am very uncomfortable with the small handful and I really appreciate everyone's work and their, and their input here. But I'm very uncomfortable with this small handful of, of members of the public that are going to be impacted for, for decades after this decision is made. So, there is that question and I still have some more time. I do want to bring up something. There was a bit of news since we are talking about our taxes. So, and the Valco rise has reduced their square footage of retail again. So, they're down to 230,000 from our 1.2 million square foot mall. So, that, that is in today's news. Thank you.
Councilmember Frum?
So, I broadly agree with Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Mohan in terms of what kind of outreach we really ought to be doing before we, we commit to having anyone do additional research since we only really get one shot at figuring out how to poll and what we want to poll on. I'm especially struck by the experience that I had over the weekend at various chamber events, discovering that people who would be dealing with this tax hadn't known that we were going to be discussing it. So, what I would really like to see us do first is to specifically reach out to our business community in order to make sure that we understand which of these, these tax options would be most palatable and engender the least resistance. options would be most palatable and engender the least resistance before we start taking actual polls of, of people in the community and committing additional resources to it. And it looks like we have the timeline to be able to do that. So I'd like to offer the, the following motion, that we would direct the city manager to delay any polling on the question of any specific revenue measure, that we direct the city manager to conduct outreach to our business community on the potential revenue measures, and then third, that we direct the city manager to return to council early in the new year to report back on the findings of outreach to the business community and to receive further direction.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan. And so I'm open for a quick discussion.
So this is a question to staff. The staff has conducted quite a few in-house surveys through the website. So I wonder if it's possible to conduct a simple survey. Here is what was discussed in the council meeting, four types of tax majors and what people think, whether a specific major.
Yeah, I think we'll want to take it back and, and take that input along with the, the rest of the conversation and look at ways to engage with the business community.
Because the survey is a way, an outreach tool. By encouraging people to take this survey, we are already informing them, this is what council is considering, so that we are not reaching out to the business community only, but also the residents who actually are, would be bearing most of the, the cost. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Momo, your light's on.
Yes, I am in support of, of the motion. I was doing some research on the destination tax. I do think as a state, we need to have some reform, or tax reform, such as redefining the sales tax sourcing rules, perhaps moving to a destination sourcing for the sales and use tax, like the transaction and use tax. And I won't, I won't read the whole speech here, but I think we can move along to a vote and, and be on time for our next meeting.
Thank you. So I'd like to open up for a roll call, please.
Can I offer an amendment? I'd like to offer a friendly amendment based on what I said. That direct the staff to consider resident survey on these tax majors so that we also do outreach to the residents.
We have a friendly amendment. I'd like to ask the motioner and the co-motioner, the second, if you would accept the friendly amendment.
So I, I won't, in order to not complicate matters for staff, if we do proceed with something, then there would be subsequently actual polling that would be statistically valid, and I don't think that we need the confusion. So I appreciate the amendment, but I'm not going to accept it.
Okay. Friendly amendment is not accepted. I think I'm going to call for a roll vote on the current motion on the table that's made by the, by Councilmember Frun, second by Vice Mayor Mohan.
Then I would like to offer a substitute motion, because the current motion mentions no outreach to the residents, and I feel very uncomfortable with that. And what we see today is not many, we have no...
I'm going to ask City Attorney Jensen. I think I've already called a question, but how was the procedure?
So you can, you can choose to recognize the speaker or not, or ask for a vote on the motion on the table.
I'd like to ask a motion, a vote on the motion on the table. If that doesn't pass, we will entertain your substitute motion at considerable time. Let's make a motion, please.
May I ask a question about?
Vote by light, please.
I'm wondering if the public will at least have this advertised. I understand that outreach to the business community, but is there any plan to put it in the courier, let people know, something like that?
Let's vote by light.
Okay. Ignore the residents. That's our vote.
Motion carries with child voting now.
All right. Thank you. Now we're waiting for, we're gonna end the special meeting, and we will open the regular meeting at 6:45.